Good evening, everyone. I call the special meeting to order at 6:03. Pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Ding.
Raise and put on your right hand, put on your right hand on your overhand and repeat after me. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Minchaca.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chan.
Here.
Councilmember Ding.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera Avila.
Present.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
Close session report. Our city attorney will now give the close session report from the special meeting held on April 1st, 2025.
There was no reportable action taken by the city council at that close session. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on the city's online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk at this time. When speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay. Approval of agenda. Are there any objections to the agenda order? Hearing none, the agenda order is approved. Okay, next item, please.
Presentations, recognition of incoming mayor and vice mayor and outgoing mayor. Congresswoman Judy Chu will now administer a ceremonial oath of office to Mayor Minchaca.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. I Denise Minchaca.
I Denise Minchaca.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear.
That and I will, that I would bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Mayor!
Thank you!
Did you want us to take a quick picture with?
Why don't you do it with her on you?
Okay.
Okay, I'm in now.
Yeah. Former Arcadia Mayor and Councilmember Peter Amundson will now administer a ceremonial oath of office to Vice Mayor Chan.
On this April 15th, Tax Day seems appropriate to.
Grab my tax tie.
It seems appropriate to install a taxpayer advocate and a a person who stands out for fiscal responsibility. Ronald Reagan once said, "The best view of government is that of a servant, not as a master." The people have the right to know that where, know that their money is being spent wisely and the voice is heard clearly. When I hear that, I think of Mr. Chan. So, Mr. Chan, will you raise your right hand? I Eric Chan.
I Eric L. Chan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that and that and that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, San Gabriel's Vice Mayor Eric Chan! You want a photo?
Oh, a photo, sure.
Can I get a photo with my parents?
Of course.
Mom and Dad, you here?
Mom?
Mom, Dad? Maybe, sorry, kind of? Maybe they had something better to do tonight.
Finally, yes!
Okay. You good? All right. Thank you, Mom. Thank you, Dad. All right.
We now have presenters to recognize incoming Mayor Minchaca and Vice Mayor Chan and outgoing Mayor Wu. I'll ask you all three to please come forward on the dais at this time. Presenters, when your name is called, please come to the podium to make your presentation. Vice Mayor, if we could have you step forward? All right, our first presenter is Congresswoman Judy Chu.
Hello, I'm Congressmember Judy Chu. I'm so happy to join everybody to celebrate not only the birthday of the city of San Gabriel, but also the success of our outgoing mayor, John Wu, and to congratulate our incoming mayor Denise Minchaca and Vice Mayor Eric Chan. I've had the honor of serving as a mayor in Monterey Park, and I know that it is truly special to be able to lead an entire city to a better tomorrow, which is why I want to thank and honor John Wu for his service as mayor over this last year. Under his leadership, the city was able to achieve the status of having strong financial stability with a $5.2 million surplus. Not only that, he improved the city's major infrastructure, repaving many major roads, upgrading sidewalks, and upgrading a citywide fiber optic network. His desire to improve public safety is why I secured $225,000 from Washington, D.C. to upgrade San Gabriel's Emergency Operations Center to replace terribly outdated equipment. He also enhanced the city's multilingual outreach for many of its services. And what I really appreciate was his initiative to have the city's first Fourth of July drone show and to honor our veterans by having the city's first Memorial Day and Veterans Day commemorations, all of which now will become annual events. Mayor Wu has truly uplifted the entire community through thoughtful, inclusive governance. And now, I'm looking forward to continuing this work with the city alongside our new mayor Denise Minchaca. Denise made history as the first Latina elected official in the city of San Gabriel and the first Latina to serve as mayor. Now, on her second term on the council, she had a tremendous challenge when she became mayor in 2020 at the height of the COVID-19 pandemic. But she rose to the challenge, providing weekly video updates to the community, and she helped in the Mission Church Fire and led a notable visit from Governor Newsom and actor Sean Penn, who came to observe the city's community-based vaccine distribution model at the Playhouse. Now, I've known Denise for many years, from her election to the San Gabriel Unified School District Board to the city council, and I admire how she is always deeply engaged in the community, working with organizations like the San Gabriel Kiwanis Club, La Casa, and 211 L.A. County. Her leadership is not only in City Hall, but across every neighborhood and community group she touches, which is why I recognize Denise as my Congressional Woman of the Year! Yes! And I'm very excited about her future plans, including preserving the iconic Mission Playhouse and improving the city's police facilities. These priorities reflect her lifelong commitment to building a stronger city, and now, as our mayor, I know she is well-equipped to lead San Gabriel through any challenges it faces so that it will continue to thrive and flourish. And I know that Denise won't be alone in this effort. In addition to her incredible colleagues in the city council, our new Vice Mayor Eric Chan will be there to support. As he steps into the role of Vice Mayor, Eric's commitment to public service and experience in the public and private sector will benefit the city. So, thank you to our city council for the incredible work you do. Congratulations to a job well-done to outgoing Mayor John Wu, and congratulations to Denise Minchaca on what I know will be a wonderful year ahead. And I would like to present certificates of congressional recognition to John Wu, Mayor 2024 to '25, Denise Minchaca, Mayor 2025 to '26, and Eric Chan, Vice Mayor, '25 to ' '26. Congratulations!
Our next presenter is Amber Young, representing Senator Sasha Rene Perez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I'm extremely honored to thank you for all of your work that you've done for this past year, to outgoing Mayor John Wu, thank you for all you've done. I was at the state of the city, and it was truly, it's commendable what you've done for the city so far, so I'm excited to keep working with you as council member. And then to incoming Mayor Denise Minchaca and incoming Vice Mayor Eric L. Chan, I'm looking forward to this next year working with you, and since I just started this job, I know there's a lot that we could do together, so congratulations.
The next presenter is Jason Hugh from the Office of Assemblymember Mike Fong.
Testing. Good evening. My name is Jason Hugh. I'm a field representative from Assemblymember Mike Fong's office. So, big night tonight. So far, outgoing Mayor John Wu, and I want to commend you for your contribution and efforts to improve city's finances and budget. I believe many of us have read the article from Work Journal, right? What a guy. Amazing work for our city's finance. And also, I want to, I want to thank John for the cultural exchange and celebrating our culture here in the, in the community of San Gabriel. I want to thank you for your leadership efforts for all those lantern, amazing lanterns from, from Taiwan, and also, I believe many of us have seen it, and it looks super good. And, 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 and I heard cost zero dollar with the city? Amazing. So, I want, I want to congratulate you and also perhaps, perhaps I'll congratulate you on all those amazing feats, and so congratulations and thank you for everything you've done with, for our city. And for incoming Mayor, incoming Mayor Denise Minchaca, I want to thank you for everything you've done for our community and for your leadership at Kiwanis Club to serve our local community, support local students, and police and fire department, and also our veterans. And so, and, and thank you. And also for incoming Vice Mayor Eric Chan, thank you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. We look forward to working with all of you. And on behalf, on behalf of Assemblymember Mike Fong, I'd like to present some certificates.
The next presenter is Pablo Morales, representing Los Angeles County Supervisor Hilda Solis.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, staff, and residents of the city of San Gabriel. My name is Pablo Morales, Field Deputy with the Los Angeles County Office of Supervisor Hilda Solis, Chair Pro Tem and Representative of the First District. It's my honor to be here with you all today to recognize Mayor Minchaca and, and outgoing Mayor John Wu and incoming Vice Mayor Eric Chan. We really want to recognize the work you've done in the city, the many improvements, especially with the, with the financial perspective, right? San Gabriel City is always a wonderful city to visit, you know, this very historic city, you know, the Mission and the wonderful restaurants, and really the creativity around the, the development, right? The, the blooming, I'm sorry, the blossom market, right? I've always enjoyed that, and I think it's very creative to see something like that, bunch of eateries in there. I think before it was a temple, right? So, we really want to recognize the, the work that you folks have done, and on behalf of Supervisor Solis, I'm here to present some certificates, and I'll read what the certificates say. And we look forward to continue to work with you all on the many needs of the First District residents and city of San Gabriel residents. So, for outgoing Mayor John Wu and for incoming Vice Mayor Eric L. Chan and for incoming Mayor Denise Minchaca, in recognition, all the certificates say, "In recognition of dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all the residents of Los Angeles County. April 15th, 2025, Tax Day. Signed, Hilda El Solis." Well, somewhat Tax Day, right? All righty.
The next presenters are Mayor Catherine Lee and Councilmember Adele Andrade Stodler from the city of Alhambra.
So, thank you, city of San Gabriel, our partners in everything transportation and everything in water, every, every department within our own city, the regional departments as well. Mayor Wu, you have been a tremendous asset since you arrived on the scene as a councilman and now as your time as mayor. I saw you all over Facebook and Instagram, so you are, you have made it to social media hierarchy. We love seeing all the things that you bring to the city, especially, a highlight was seeing the beautiful lanterns that you were able to, to bring in. I know we had issues with lanterns before, so it was beautiful that you, that you were able to do that. Thank you for the partnership, thank you for your time, and on behalf of the city of Alhambra, we want to wish you a very, a good sitting on the other side, but just as equally important, thank you.
Good evening, I'm so, I'm honored to be here with the three of you, and I've had a conversation with all three of you separately. And Mayor Minchaca, I remember the first time I met you was at the Stop Asian Hate Crime, Stop Asian Hate March, and we had a really good conversation about the cause, and so, and I remember you, how you talked about your dogs, and that's something I remember. But I think you're a very friendly, personal person, I could tell that you're very dedicated to the city and to the resident of San Gabriel, and your, your love for the city, I could just, just shone through your conversation with me. And I want to congratulate also to the Vice Mayor, Eric Chan, and I also had talked with you, and I remember you coming to the Alhambra Farmers Market. I believe that was the first time I met you, and I just thank you for, you know, being a friend of Alhambra and also just being very concerned about the, the whole entire San Gabriel Valley. So, I have certificates also from the city of Alhambra on behalf of the residents, we congratulate you as well.
Mayor Vinco from Monterey Park.
All right, I'm going to have my two colleagues, Pro Tem Liz Yang, as well as Councilmember Henry Lo, join us. So, thank you for having us today, and congratulations to the city of San Gabriel for swearing in three continuing leaders. First, Mayor John Wu, fabulous work in the last year or so. I see so much going on with the city with your leadership and with the lanterns, the festival, the work of public safety. Kudos to you and the team for doing that. And then to incoming Mayor Denise Minchaca, this is not your first rodeo, so I'll save a lot of good stuff, which I know it'll repeat itself, but I value your friendship and your continuing leadership in the community, and of course, Eric Chan, I see you around a lot, which tells me you're dedicated and involved in the community. So, I'll pass on to our Pro Tem to have a couple of words.
Thank you, Mayor Vinco. So, you know, I echo my colleague's words here, congratulations to all three of you. Each of you is a good friend of mine. Outgoing Mayor John Wu, thank you for all your service to the city. Under your leadership, San Gabriel is blossoming, and so much work has been done, so we really acknowledge you for all the great work you've done for this community. And incoming Mayor Denise Minchaca, thank you for being a role model in this community. You and I are also the only women sitting on a council of four men, so, you know, we are representing the female population and acknowledge you for your leadership and very excited to see what is in store for the city under your leadership coming forward. And incoming Vice Mayor Eric Chan, I got to know you through the CACA community and see all the great work that you're doing for the city as well, so very excited to see all your great work. Congratulations to all three of you, and here's my colleague, Councilmember Henry Lo.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, and I also want to express congratulations for continuing to serve your community. I've known many of you, all of you, for many years, in fact, in some cases before elected office. John, your involvement in various organizations like CCBA, the Taiwan Business Association. Denise, you and I met when we were both serving on school board, Eric on water board, and, and again, it's because you care about the community, and that is why you devote so much time to making a better place, and so, congratulations. We are, well, excuse me. Okay, work is calling. I'll call them back later. But again, as our friends from Alhambra said, you know, we share boundaries, we share issues, and we have to work together, and we are looking forward to doing that, so congratulations.
The next presenter is Mayor Margaret Clark of the city of Rosemead.
I am so excited to be here, and I, Mayor, outgoing Mayor John Wu, I appreciate your involvement in things. You were just there on the 36th issues that are really important for us, and I appreciate your being involved. And Denise, I got a letter from Maryvale saying that they were named California Nonprofit of the Year by Assemblywoman Blacka Rubio, and it reminded me how you and I worked our tails off on the Measure W that would have double taxed our churches and nonprofits, huge amounts, because they have big parking lots, all kinds of stuff. And, and we just paid our second installment of the property taxes, and so, I, I tried to reach out to some of the nonprofits and churches and say, "Are you sure? Make sure you don't have Measure W on there," because we all do from our, our houses, but I really appreciate all the work. You're a fighter, and I, I look forward to continuing that, because there's a lot of issues. And then, Eric, I really appreciate your common sense, I look forward so much to working with you. I look forward so much to working with you, because there's a lot of issues facing all of us. And, and I'm just really thankful that we have a good team. So, thank you very much.
Next, we have certificates from the City of El Monte and the City of La Puente for Mayor Munchaka. They weren't able to be here. Also for Vice Mayor Eric Chan, same cities. And for outgoing Mayor John Wu. Our next speaker is Jeff Cahann.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. You might remember me, Jeff Cahann from Norco. I'm the past Chair and current member of our Parks and Recreation Commission, past Chair and current member of our Veterans Commission. I've spoke here before a few times in the last few years. I just wanted to briefly say, congratulations, Mayor Wu. It sounds like you had an outstanding year, so thank you for your service to your community as, as you're outgoing. And best of wishes to the incoming Mayor Munchaka for the year you're having ahead. And just my personal congratulations to my friend Eric. I was here two years ago when you were sworn in, and I'm proud to be back here to see you sworn in as the Vice Mayor. So as a longtime Commissioner, I work with our City Council. I've been doing that for 13 years. I know how hard all of the City Council works and the staff. And so, I just congratulate you for what you've done, what you will do, and thank you for your service to your community. So, congratulations.
The next is Victor Gao, representing IPAC, AA, AA, ATF, and San Gabriel Hope Lions Club.
Good evening. My name's Frank, Frank Ye. Our team, Victor Gao right here, and Mary, three of us represent our organization's IPAC. We're here to congratulate you to the incoming mayor and Vice Mayor. And also, we appreciate our, of outgoing Mayor John Wu. As a personal, as a resident, longtime resident of the San Gabriel, I would like to thank to John Wu for your outstanding achievement and your job well done. Very thankful for your working for our community. And also Denise, this personally, she's my good friend. And also Eric Chan, we're here to wish you all the best and have a successful campaign for our San Gabriel city.
Alright, I'm here, I'm Victor Gao. I'm congratulating for John Wu and Denise Munchaka and Eric Chan. Okay, I think, I know you, John Wu, make a high achievement for City of San Gabriel. I look forward for the new leadership to shine the San Gabriel again. Alright, thank you.
Hi, Denise Munchaka. With a deep appreciation, we honor you, steadfast leadership and unwavering support of the API community. As a three-time IPAC Endors Office Officer and a longtime friend of the SANS USA Celebration, your dedication to public service and, and inclusive governance continue to uplift and unite the people of San Gabriel. We are proudly congratulate you on your appointment as mayor, as looking forward to you continue to service community. Thank you.
The next is Mike Eng, Board Member, California Unemployment Insurance Appeals Board.
Well, I'm sorry, because of the budget crisis, I have no paper certificates, but I am so happy to have represented the City of San Gabriel when I was in the State Assembly and Community College Board of Trustees. I'm currently serving in the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, and I am so thrilled and honored for the public service that you three represent. John, it's amazing. I have to look up to you figuratively and literally many times and the tremendous innovation you brought. Denise, you've been an amazing powerhouse and innovator ever since you were in the school district. And, and Eric, you're an amazing person. I've gotten a chance to know you a little bit better in the past few years. So congratulations, all of you. You know, Judy, if we didn't have such a high mortgage payment in Monterey Park, I would move to San Gabriel. Congratulations.
The next presenter is Helena Sun of CWBAC.
Hello, my name's Helena. Yes. Greetings to all the distinguished guests, honorable leader, leaders of our various government. This is such a pleasure to participate in this festive event today. Today, we say a big thank you to our outgoing Mayor John Wu and for all your relentless hard work and services to make San Gabriel a better place to live and to do business. We are an organization that promote and empower women in business. We are especially glad to welcome Denise Munchaka to be the next mayor that will lead City of San Gabriel to higher greatness. Of course, we also welcome Mr. Eric Chan to be our Vice Mayor. We look forward to work with you, new mayor and Vice Mayor, to create more success stories, not only for women, but for whole community. Major, congratulations again. May God bless you. Thank you.
Okay, now, I've got three cameras here. I got a camera. Be patient. Alright, this one. Hold on, I have this one for somebody else up there. Thank you for staying put. And one more. Hold on.
Good job.
You have to be a little aggressive, apparently. Okay, one, two, three. Good, did you get one mic? We're good, thank you.
The next presenter is Theodore G. Samms. Denise Goch.
Councilman John Wu, former mayor, I want to congratulate you for all the work that you've done for all the citizens of San Gabriel, especially the Lantern Festival, and first and foremost, recognizing all of the veterans in the City of San Gabriel. To my good friend, incoming Madam Mayor Denise Munchaka, congratulations. And to John Chan, Eric Chan, sorry Eric, I wish you, I, I know, Tax Day, Tax Day. When I'm done here, I'm picking up my taxes, by the way. Anyway, I wanted to congratulate you as incoming Vice Mayor. And to Denise, I can't wait to see you in the City Council, what you come up this year for all of us. Congratulations and best of luck to all of you.
Okay, I'll now invite Vice Mayor Chan to retake his seat on the dais. And Mayor Munchaka has a presentation for outgoing Mayor Wu.
Here in the City of San Gabriel, we have a tradition for the outgoing mayor gets a very special plaque in gratitude for their time, their dedication, their commitment. It's always a challenge. I always say, every mayor has a crisis of sorts. There's always something that kind of becomes a turning point. There were several for Councilmember Wu, but I think it's been said this evening, not only did we finally get out of that budget crisis that we did have, it took seven, eight years, but he was able to kind of pass that baton over, but also the relationships that we've built. We have some new sister cities, and with the new sister cities, we're, we're going to continue to have these amazing lanterns for 10 years at no cost to the city. But I think it's just his whole spirit, his real genuine love for this city, I think that just is so apparent to all of us. And I just want to say that I really appreciate it, working with you as the Vice Mayor. And I hope when you see this, it brings a smile to your face. I know you dedicate it so much time, but I will turn this around. It's, it's a, it has a gavel that you can actually take out. And it says, "Presented to John Wu in appreciation of your dedicated and loyal service as mayor of the City of San Gabriel, 2024 to 2025." And there's also in the hallway, for those who stay for the cake, there is a plate, a gold plate, for every mayor that has served the city since its inception. So your name will also be up there. If it's not there now, it will be there. So congratulations.
So Councilmember Wu, would you like to have a few remarks?
Well, thank you very much. Well, first of all, thank you for giving me the honor to serve in the prostate of San Gabriel. One year as a mayor may seem short, but it's long enough to understand the weight of responsibility that comes with the role. When I was selected as a Vice Mayor, I knew that was the time to start preparing, not just for the title, but for the goals I hoped to achieve once I stepped into this role. I made a list of priorities, of challenges, of hopes for our city. And today, I'm proudly saying that we have checked most, almost every item of the list. Goals have been met and promise has been kept. But this is not about me, this is about the team that made it all happen. So to my fellow council members, our City Manager, Department Heads, City Staff, our Public Works, our Police and Fire Departments, thank you. This year's success is because of your hard work, dedication, and belief in what we can accomplish together. I also want to give a special thanks to my former mayor, John Harrington. He was the one, the first person who encouraged me to apply for the City Council. And he gave me the guidance and support to become the kind of public servant that I strive to be. I learned a lot from him when I was served as his Vice Mayor, and I carry those lessons with me still. Looking ahead, I have full confidence in our new mayor, Denise Munchaka. Her deep experience and years of services to our community will continue to lead San Gabriel towards a bright and promising future. I also want to extend my best wishes to our new Vice Mayor, Eric Chan. I know he will be, he will bring energy, new ideas, and fresh prospect, perspective to the roles as he continues to serve our residents with dedication. And thank you again for trusting me with this opportunity. It's been the honor of my lifetime. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chan, would you like to make some remarks?
Sure. Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, I promise to be brief. Trust me, I still don't like when politicians talk too long either. So, I don't know, it's me. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Wu for his fine leadership as mayor of San Gabriel over the past year. Next, I want to congratulate Madam Mayor Munchaka on her coming term. Now, I'm thankful and honored that my colleagues up here on the, on the dais in the City, San Gabriel City Council, have placed their faith in me to carry out the duties of Vice Mayor for the coming year. And as always, I'd like to thank my family and my many close friends, whose love and support made this day possible for me. I look forward to continuing to work with my council colleagues and city staff to serve all the residents and businesses of San Gabriel, taking on more responsibilities in my new role as San Gabriel's Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, I will say, very short too, I'll try to be very short. First of all, I want to express my deepest gratitude to everyone who is here tonight and to those who are with me in spirit but couldn't attend due to other commitments. I truly feel the support from so many of you. It gives me the strength and determination to continue on this journey as your elected representative. I could not do this work without the unwavering love and encouragement of my husband, John, of 38 years, right over there. Also, affectionately known as the first dude, and our four incredible adult children. I'm so fortunate to have a family that not only supports me, but also values my passion for public service. Also want to extend my sincere thanks to our dedicated city staff for working alongside us to bring our shared vision to life, making San Gabriel the very best place to live, shop, and play. To my colleagues, thank you for your partnership on the dais as we continue moving forward together. together. This marks my second time as mayor of the city of San Gabriel. My first term began in March of 2020, a time marked by virtual meetings and unprecedented events, including the COVID-19 pandemic, the weekly mayor videos to the community, the mission church fire, and a notable visit from Governor Newsom and actor Sean Penn, who came to observe our community-based vaccine distribution model at the Playhouse. Now in 2025, I'm excited to continue building on our city's progress. This is a dynamic time to reflect, to grow, and to introduce new services and programs that will enhance the spirit and greatness of San Gabriel. Let's keep coming together as a community, with each of us playing a part in shaping the heart of San Gabriel. By staying connected and engaged, we can continue building a city filled with pride, warmth, and lasting memories for generations to come. Thank you. Gracias. She she. Would any council members, there's only two, I think, would like to make comments at this time? Okay. Herrera Avila?
So first of all, I just want to say thanks to the community for coming out and supporting our city, and being part and active in our, members of our community, especially the elected officials that came from their cities. And I know the tremendous work that they do, and I want to thank every single one of you guys. Also, to former Mayor John Wu, you would definitely push the envelope, and have tested the waters, and have implemented different things in the community, which is, it's a nice thing. Even though we might have different trains of thoughts and different mentality, that's what makes it beautiful, and makes our city so diverse. So congratulations on that successful term. Mayor Denise Mchaka, I know you had a crazy year the first time you were a mayor, and you were COVID time, and then, I believe, the fire as well, right? The fire, and I don't know any crazier time to serve as a mayor. And you were resilient, and you stepped to the occasion, and you kept the community informed. So looking forward to this second term now, doing it the way that we're supposed to do, not behind a camera. So congratulations. And to Vice Mayor Chang, congratulations. I've seen you in the community before, when you served in the Water Board, and your commitment, and how you're every single place. And just your sense of humor, it's just, it goes a long way, because the stuff that we do here is serious, and it affects a lot of people in our community. And the fact that you're able to do it with grace and with a sense of humor, I think that speaks volumes. So congratulations.
Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I really glad to see the former mayor, John Wu. And I'm really proud of the way I did, back to the 2022, our city council have two council member, included mayor, resigned. Then we have the three council member to appoint it. So we appointed one of the council member, it's John Wu. So, and right now, it's finished his the mayor term, and also it's do a lot of tremendous job for our community, especially for the veteran, like Memorial Day ceremony and Veterans Days ceremony. And 4th of July, we have the drama show too. And he also do the, like, for our Chinese community, especially for the Latin festival. And before, it's just one days, right? Have two days. It's a lot of the attendee to coming to join this meaningful cultural event. And plus, and it's a good, you do a good job, it's for the Taiwan, the two sister city. And also sister city, and help us the, it's 10 years, right? For the Latin, they donate the Latin for our city at no cost. So that's, it's really helped our community, especially our community is really like diversity, and most it's Asia cultural. And also, I saw the audience, a lot of like different group people. I hope you can enjoy this kind of the culture. And so, and definitely, the rest of the week, everybody, I think the elected office has already said that our city, the financial status, it's improved, and public health too, probably the safety too. Yeah, thank you, the council, right now, the council member Wu. Okay, thank you, do the tremendous job for our whole community. And for the current mayor, Denise Mchanga, we, actually, I, we are same days, you are become mayor, I'm become the council member, that 2020, at the end of, actually. And it's a tough time, but I saw you the leadership, even with all the meeting, it's on a virtual. I'm swearing it's on a virtual, not like today's, this kind of ceremony. But you, this time, today, you enjoyed the, in person, the this, the mayor, the ceremony. And you are like first Latino American, the elect mayor. And actually, that year, I saw you have, you do a good job to let us go through the pandemic. And congratulations, you, this time, you're back to the good celebration, and with your husband, John. Yeah. And the incoming Vice Mayor, Eric Chan, yeah, I, I actually, before, even before I become a council member, I know you're a Water Board member. And under my water bill, I have your name too. Okay. So I know you do that, you already spend your time to serve our community, help the community. I glad to become the, our council member, and right now, it's Vice Mayor. Congratulations. So we have the new team, and then hopefully, we move our city more its right direction. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. So I received a note that we have the city of Saritos here. I know it's kind of a hike, so please come forward and do your presentation.
Hello, good evening, everyone. The past council member, council mayor, John Wu, and all the councilmen, and the new council member, you know, mayor and councilman, everybody, and all the audience, good evening. I am Jennifer Hong, I'm come from city of Saritos. I just got elected in March during our special election. Today, it took me one and a half hour because of the traffic for Sarito to here, I hit all the lovely freeways. But anyway, I'm so glad I make it, I want to make it short, but the reason I have to be here, I think, you know, I got to be here because John Wu and also Tony Ding are very good friend of our IPAC, and very important leader in our IPAC organization. Not to mention, John Wu is always my role model, because every time when we have a meeting, we always, you know, pay attention, but we just turn for him to talk, we always have our ears open, like, what is he going to talk to us? He always making such a wonderful comments, and it always makes sense. We say, oh yes, John, you nail it, you know? Not to mention, during my swearing day, I called him a night before, I was like, oh, pulling my hair, who should I call to do the administration of my swearing? And I called him, and I was like, wow, it's kind of late, John, I hope he's still awake. And he immediately answered my phone call, and I said, can you please do me a favor, you know? Can you come over and do this favor for me? You know what? He said, yes, right there. I said, wow, my God, you know? So I tell the city clerk, everybody, right away. I'm so impressed, and I'm so thankful to John Wu, and he's my role model, as I was talking before, because I saw him posted on the WeChat, on the social media. He did a lot of good thing for San Gabriel, and I'm learning from him, because especially nowadays, to make the budget is even better, not deficit. This is amazing, amazing job. It's not just about all the event, it's how you manage the city, how you need to make the city even better, that's what you have accomplished. And this is something I'm going to ask you a lot, and you know, during my next four years term. I really appreciate that. And also, I want to thank Denise for also coming to my swearing day. I really appreciate the friendship, and good luck with your new career, new position as a mayor. Thank you again, and thank you, Tony, as a good friend as well. But congratulations, John Wu, you've done a great job for the city, and I really want to say thank you, and I appreciate all what you have do and have done for the city, and your dedication to the city is amazing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, next item, please.
City's birthday. Mayor Mchaka will make the presentation.
See, the city of San Gabriel is known as the birthplace of the Los Angeles region, and boasts a powerful and far-reaching history in California. San Gabriel was founded by the Spanish in 1771 with the establishment of the Mission San Gabriel, known as the pride of California missions. The mission was the starting place for the epic walk of los pobreadores, who walked nine miles to find the pueblo that is now the city of Los Angeles. The Native American population living in the area, the Gaberlinos, helped to build the mission and have remained a key part of the story of the region. San Gabriel was one of the first townships in the county of Los Angeles, and the city was incorporated on April 24, 1913, with a population of 1,500 people. Today, the city's diverse population is over 36,000. This year marks the city's 112th birthday. Happy birthday, San Gabriel. Okay, next item, please.
Outstanding Older American, Rick Khan. Community Services Director Perez and Mayor Mchaka will make the presentation. We invite Mr. Khan to come forward to the podium at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Mchaka and members of the city council. Tonight, we are pleased to announce our 2025 Outstanding Older American. Each year, the city council recognizes a deserving individual for his or her outstanding volunteerism and service to the San Gabriel community. We are grateful to this year's winner, as with our past winners, for the numerous hours of service and dedication to the San Gabriel community. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Mchaka for the presentation of this year's award.
Okay, thank you so much. The actual certificate is in the agenda item, and I will be presenting it to Mr. Khan. But this one's a real special one for me. It goes back to my mayorship back in 2020, so I do have a few comments, so please indulge me. It is truly an honor to stand before you today as we recognize a remarkable individual who embodies the heart of our community service, Mr. Rick Khan. As mayor of San Gabriel now and in 2020, I had the privilege of seeing firsthand the many ways our residents step up to support one another. But some people go beyond what's expected. They lead with compassion, they act with purpose, and they inspire others to do the same. Rick Khan is one of those people. When the pandemic hit, our most vulnerable residents, especially our seniors, faced unprecedented challenges. Rick didn't wait for anyone to ask for help. He saw a need and answered the call. While many were still figuring out how to respond, Rick, along with the mosque of San Gabriel, was already providing free meals and groceries to those experiencing food insecurity. But what truly speaks to Rick's heart is his commitment to dignity. When he learned that many of our homebound seniors were receiving frozen meals, he asked, how can we do better? And he did just that, ensuring they received a hot, nourishing meal that brought not only comfort, but care. Since the pandemic, Rick has continued to coordinate food drives, distribute school supplies, and provide basic necessities to those most in need today. Rick, your efforts have made a lasting difference in the lives of so many. You've brought warmth and humanity into every space you've touched. On behalf of the city of San Gabriel, I want to thank you for the countless hours you've devoted, for showing up and caring, and for being the kind of person who makes our community better. Congratulations on being named the 2025 Older American, Older Outstanding American. You have truly made San Gabriel a better, more compassionate place. Thank you, Rick. And council members, if you can, please join me in presenting the certificate. Okay, I invite Mr. Khan to say a few words.
Yes. Good evening. Madam Mayor, esteemed council members, and my fellow residents. First, let me say a few, first, I'm just moved. First, let me say, I'm deeply honored that I am, that I am the one who's chosen for this recognition. And in my early twenties, as an accountant, I used to wear thick glasses to look older and more mature. Now, in my teens, I color my hair and move quickly to appear younger. I didn't work then, it didn't work then, and it doesn't work now. But finally, I've been officially stamped as a senior, and that, I'm sure, will make my wife very happy behind. On a serious note, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to the newly-elected mayor and the council members for including me in this, in the distinguished line of individuals who have earned the respect of this community. This award is not just for recognition of my efforts, but a testament to the strength and unity of our city. The work we've done through our mosque reflects the shared values that bind us together: compassion, generosity, and commitment to uplifting one another. I'd also like to take this opportunity to mention that my 41 years of running a computer I T business have shown me the power of persuasive, of perseverance, adaptability, and importance of staying connected, not just technologically, but also with people. I'm humbled and inspired to continue serving this wonderful community that has given me so much. Thank you for this incredible honor, gratitude.
Thank you, Rick. At this time, we will recess the meeting and invite you to all join us in the council chamber lobby for cake in celebration of the city's 112th birthday, and the city officials and the outstanding Older American honored tonight. The meeting will resume at 7:25. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we will now resume the meeting at 7:30. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on consent calendar items and on items of interest that are not on the agenda, but are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to the clerk. Our first speaker is Patricia Fulton.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. My name is Patricia Fulton. I am a resident of the city of San Gabriel at 1047 Abbott Avenue, San Gabriel, and my family's been the only occupant of that house for over 80 years. So, but I'm not that old. Anyway, I come to you to cordially invite not only the city council because I know they're here, not only the city staff because I know they're here, but also the San Gabriel Police and Fire Department, Public Works, Community Services Department. I know I am going to see them at the 80th Annual Kiwanis Club of San Gabriel and San Gabriel Community Services Pancake Breakfast Celebration at Smith Park this Saturday. This is an event the Kiwanis Club of San Gabriel has started in the 1940s, and it has only stopped twice. Once during COVID and once last year during the rain. But the newscast still came to San Gabriel, so I know they will be there this year. I want to invite too, all the people here in the audience and also all who are watching on your TV station that this goes to. I want everybody to come because it's going to be exciting. We're going to start it off with a great pancake breakfast that includes pancakes and sausages and all the attachments. And I will tell you, the way that this has been reorganized in the last three years has been so impressive. I'm like going, okay, what do I do now? But it is just the joy that I see in the residents, the guests, the children, and most important, the children, is just so much. I know our Public Works Department, I know our Community Services Department has really been working overtime on this, and I personally appreciate it. So I'm looking forward to seeing everybody because I know I'm going to be there at the coffee station, and you will see many, many high school volunteers from our local key clubs. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and especially, I'm looking forward to seeing you there. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thank you, Pat.
Madam Mayor, may I ask a question?
We can ask.
Ms. Fulton, can you tell everyone how to get tickets? Do we have to buy in advance or can we pay at the door?
You can pay at the door. They are $8 this year because, of course, prices have gone up. I do not have tickets, but sometimes our fellow Kiwanians do. But you can buy at the door.
Okay, great.
It's also $4 for $30.
Oh, yeah, they're $8 apiece, but thank you, Mayor Manchaca. Four tickets for $30. They're normally $8, so four times. You're saving, so there are no children's prices. It's just when price fits all.
Great, thank you.
But it's a lot. Bring your families. Thank you.
We're looking to see you there. I'll be there.
Okay. Next speaker.
Ted Sams. Ted Sams. Dr. Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca, Vice Mayor Chan, and our city council members. I understand that today is a day when you want to celebrate. I understand that the city council members want to highlight their successes at every opportunity. I get it. But just as Mayor Wu had his opportunity on March 25th, this was your chance to acknowledge the tangible fear and anxiety that is invading this city. I was born in the U.S. My ancestors were the enslaved people who built the foundation this country rests on. You can't get much more American than I am or than my children are. So what does it say that my children call me daily anxious and fearful for their future and for what is happening now to their friends and classmates? This is not some distant threat. Over 500 students here legally have had their visas revoked for daring to exercise their First Amendment rights. We have people who are being picked up by ICE on a daily basis and disappeared. We have ICE attempting to enter L.A. Unified Schools by lying to officials to get to children. In his State of the City speech, Mayor Wu proudly highlighted how the city partnered with the school district to create safe spaces for children by building new playground equipment. How can we create a safe space for our children when they are terrified of being snatched up by ICE or returning home to find a parent gone? Will the teachers and staff at SGUSD stand up to ICE like those staff members did at L.A. Unified? Mayor Wu highlighted the grants that the SGPD has obtained, including federal grants from Homeland Security. What price will San Gabriel have to pay to get those funds? We see every day that the Trump administration is sending out ransom-like certification letters, threatening not to release money that has already been promised. The last time that San Gabriel partnered with Homeland Security, the city council authorized SGPD to bring ICE into our community. Every executive order that Trump has signed wants counter to every diversity initiative, every goal for inclusion, and every promise of equity that you may be trying to create for our city. The very fact that Mayor Wu was able to present his State of the City Address in English and Mandarin would be seen by this administration as un-American. In the coming weeks, I want to know what you plan to do to provide the services that are being destroyed by this administration. What are you going to do when they manage to dismantle the Department of Education, throw thousands of veterans and seniors off of Medicare and Medicaid rolls, and remove housing from immigrants? How is this city going to respond? We need action yesterday. We have no more time to waste. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person.
Mr. Alan Ko.
Good evening. The Honorable Mayor and City Manager and City Attorney, I presume. I come before you tonight, brother. Sorry for my... I was so tired. I just came from my long-distance drive, and I tried to rush over because 6:30. Anyway, I came here on behalf of my young sister. I'm the biggest, oldest brother in a family of 13. So, and they are in trouble in San Gabriel. They've been a longtime resident here for almost 30 years, and then also have business here for that long also. And then probably 20 years ago, and they moved in San Gabriel, and they pulled together the resources, purchased a house here in San Gabriel, and make a home there. So all the family member, you know, gathered together and live in one unit to save expenses. And then at that time, a couple of places, they converted into a living quarter because so many people. And then one day, the co-ens帽ment went in and gave them a ticket, okay, and alluded to them that they have an permitted structure. And so the whole family was panicked. So at that time, because if they got displaced from the two units, okay, they had no place else to go, you know, because the cost is so prohibitive. And then I went down to the city hall. At that time, not an Asian councilman was on the city council. It was all, you know, non-Asian. And then I explained the situation. I don't know, maybe my explanation getting sympathy or something. All of a sudden, no action was taken, and this lingered on for like almost 20 years. So, and two of my nieces were born there and one nephew. And they are teenagers now, you know, 13, 15 years old. And all of a sudden, because one of the family disfil, you know, one of my younger brother passed away, and he have a young wife that he married from Vietnam. So they were under the Vietnam law, communist law. When you resign the place, you own the property. So she was under the assumption that since she lived there for a long time and she understands that property was illegal at the time, and no action was taken. And so she thought that she can own the place. So we have a family dispute after that. She creates so much trouble, so we had to let her go if somewhere else. I'm sorry. Can I?
Okay, so I just turned to the city manager. He said there will be someone that would be talking to you about this?
I wanted to make it quick, okay? One minute only.
I'm sorry, your time is...
I want to, yeah, I want to put, I want the city council can put my item on the agenda so that I can discuss about it. I really appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Well, we'll have further discussions. Staff will get in contact with you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next person.
Next speaker is Mary Garcia.
Good evening, Mayor Manchaca. Congratulations. Vice Mayor Eric, congratulations, and city council, city manager. I'm addressing the city council today because I want to, first of all, thank Mark for assisting me in trying to get the freeway off-ramp of San Gabriel Boulevard cleaned up. Yes, they did come out, maybe after two months. They cleaned it up, picked up the trash, but never cut down the overgrowth. My husband and I exited the freeway on Sunday. Mark, it's like somebody threw a bucket of trash all over, I mean, a whole trash can all over again. There's a fender there. Somebody had an accident. They left their fender there. We need to see if we can get Caltrans on a schedule to come out at least once a month to check it there. I don't know why that's the worst off-ramp. Why they pick San Gabriel to dump everything there? Get off the freeway, dump your food there, dump your trash there, leave your bumper there. But the overgrowth really needs to be cut down, especially getting close to the hotel. It's really overgrown. And then it's going up the wires. I don't know if Edison can help do that, but we need to get it cleaned up. And also, I noticed the other day, and I tried to notice when I came in, there were four trees over here on the side that were dead since the winds. Right here, you can see them right across. I tried to see, but I couldn't see tonight. They need to be taken down. I mean, they were falling over since the winds. I don't know. Check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Mayor, I have no more speaker cards.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council requests separate discussion. Staff requests that item 4D be approved as amended to add Vice Mayor Chan back as the alternate to the Metropolitan Transportation Authority.
Okay. Would any council member like to pull an item for separate discussion?
Yes, I would. I would like to pull item 4F.
Okay. So let's have, let's vote on the other items, and then we can have a separate discussion on F. Would anyone like to move to approve consent items, all but F?
I'm over.
Okay, I have a first. I have a second. I'll second. Okay, let's vote. I can second too.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay, so let's now look at consent item F. Do we have any public comment? You said none? Okay. Councilmember Herrera Avala?
Yes. So first of all, I want to start by asking a question to the city attorney. Given the appearance of possible conflict of interest, particularly if personal or political benefit could arise from participation in this trip, can the city attorney advise whether councilmember Wu and Mayor Manchaca should be required to recuse themselves from voting on this item?
There is no legal conflict. They can participate.
So even if no legal requirement exists, I respectfully request a voluntary recusal to ensure transparency in preserving the public trust in this decision-making process.
Any more discussion?
And then after that, I have a motion that I want to make.
Okay. Anyone else want to make a statement?
And I have a few more other statements.
Okay, I'm sorry. Why don't you just continue on?
Okay, thank you. So before this item is debated or approved, I believe we have an obligation to establish clear travel policies, especially from trips sponsored or paid by foreign government or third entities. I want to make a move to motion to postpone this item and direct staff to return with a formal travel policy that includes thresholds, disclosures, and approvals related to this third-party travel funding. This is essential to uphold transparency and consistency.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the motion, so I'm making a motion. Is that how it works, Mark?
Well, let's sit here from the rest of the council if they have any other comments, and then we can proceed with a motion. Are there any other council members that would like to make a statement or comment? Okay.
Okay, so then I would like to continue with my questions. Or how would that work?
I thought you were done.
No, I have a slew of questions.
Okay, well, why don't you just...
But I'm not sure how that's going to work. Can I make that motion right now, or do I continue with my questions?
The motion, if successful, would terminate the item. So you would then, the rest of your questions or presentations would not be pertinent.
And that's perfectly fine, because what I'm asking is for a policy.
We understand. Mayor, it's up to you whether you want to take the motion now or take it after he...
Okay, well, if there's no other comments from my colleagues, why don't you go ahead and make the motion?
So because if it doesn't pass, then I'm able to continue with my questions. Is that correct, city attorney? If it doesn't pass?
If the motion doesn't pass, the discussion...
Continues, right? Okay, so then I can refer back to my questions, okay? So, yeah, I would like to make that motion. And the motion again is to postpone the item and direct staff to return with formal travel for policies that include thresholds to disclosures and approvals related to third-party travel. And I believe so, there were many conversations about travel before in the past, and there was a particular recommendation to have a policy. So before I make the motion, I would like to see where's the progress with the particular travel policy related to the sister cities.
I'm sorry, I did not want to interrupt the motion. We do not have direction from council to amend any of our travel policies. When the city council adopted the sister city policy, it included a provision about travel to visit sister cities, and it was very simple. It said that any travel to any foreign country or anywhere for sister city purposes would have to be considered by the city council on a case-by-case basis.
Understood. So then I would like to make that motion now.
Okay, is there a second? I see no second, so the motion has failed. Would you like to continue with your...
Yes, please. So my question would be, what specific findings? And actually, if we can, I want to direct staff to introduce what I'm talking about before we continue, basically, if staff can present so the public is aware of what I'm referring to. Is that possible?
Well, the only staff is Mark at this point and the city attorney. I mean, if there's no other comments except for yours, I want to make a motion also. And so since you made the motion already, I'll make the motion to approve the item. There is no time to delay this trip. There is no time to delay this trip. Something that we actually, a correction to the staff report is, this is something we've been working on for the last couple of months. We made sure that legally, we've had exchanges back and forth, that this is a trip that is in compliance with the, whatever it's called here, I'm sorry, the code.
And the FPPC.
And the FPPC.
The findings are listed in the staff report.
And so it's been ongoing for at least a couple of months. I think this is an important trip to cement those type of relationships. It is important for us to be present. It is not costing the city any money. If we want some type of travel policy, we can do it after the fact, but this is time-sensitive. If we don't approve it tonight, the trip would have to be canceled. So I move to approve consent agenda item F.
Can I have before?
Can I have a second?
I second.
Before, I would like to have a lot, I have more questions.
Okay, I have a second.
I have comments.
I have more questions, because this is, this is a gift from a foreign country, and it's for two councilmembers to go. And again, I feel that the staff has failed us to put this on the consent calendar. I understand that it's urgent to have this trip that, like you're saying, it's not urgent, and that's why I want to, I want to...
It is urgent, because it's only a certain amount of time. This is comparable to the Olympics.
So when, in the staff report, I feel the staff report has failed us because we have, it's only two pages.
And it's understood.
And I want to know, when is the trip? And why is it urgent? Because it's not clear.
In the report.
It's not, it's not in the report.
The dates are in the report?
It's not in the report, and this is why I'm calling for a discussion. If you can please point out where it's at in the report for transparency, and this is exactly why I'm urging the council to have a discussion. We should not just say because it's urgent, because we need more explanation to the community on why we're taking a gift from a foreign country, which, correct me if I'm wrong, these two people that are going, they have declined to recuse themselves.
Yes.
And that's fine. That's fine. But the fact of the matter is that you're, those two individuals are going to get a flight to Taiwan, board, food, everything included with actual, the game that they're going to also included, for four to five days. But the staff report does not have anything that warrants an emergency trip to this foreign country, paid by a foreign country. So now we're accepting this gift from a foreign country. We already accepted the lanterns from the foreign country for nine more years. And now we're accepting a gift, and councilmember Wu just came back from Taiwan.
But that was paid by himself. That was a personal expense.
And we had this item for, when he went to Taiwan, the question was asked if the city was willing to pay for both the councilmember and the city manager, and the finding was that the council denied that. So what makes that different from today? Now, the government of Taiwan is paying for the whole trip, which might be $10,000, we don't know. I don't even have, we don't even have a breakdown of what's included. So I feel we should have, instead of trying to pass this through, we need to create a policy, because this could create serious issues.
Okay, so let me, let me answer one of your questions. Page two of the staff report, it says there the dates, four to five days, starting on May 17th. I want to make sure for the record, we have a second. And we also have councilmember Ding who wants to make a statement. So I need to make sure that everyone has the opportunity who wants to speak. You've had plenty of time.
Well, I...
Allow me to...
I mean, what is plenty, what is plenty of time? I've been elected by the community.
You can't be here, I mean, we have limits on the amount of time.
No, we could. We do not have a limit on how much a city councilmember can speak when we're asking questions.
Let me turn it to the city attorney.
The mayor has the ability to run the meeting and to allocate the time and order in which councilmembers can address an item.
Thank you.
What is the purpose of the trip? What is the purpose of the second trip to Taiwan within two years?
It's not...
I mean, within a year, within a couple of months, we're going to go visit and see a game, just because we want to say, or have this...
The purpose is in the staff report.
So what is it? To see the game?
Well, if you didn't read the staff before...
We can compare it to our 2028 Olympics? First of all...
You know what, I'm going to turn it to councilmember Ding.
First of all, I don't understand why...
Because he's been very patient.
I don't understand why we're...
Stop. Mr. Herrera Avala. Councilmember Ding, can you have a moment here to share your thoughts, too? Because it's all in one side.
Okay. This, if, if like councilmember Herrera say that, so we don't need to establish any sister city, don't need to establish any friendship, friend-able ship city, if we saw for your thought.
That's not what I'm saying, but I'm arguing...
Allow him to finish.
Okay, all right. You should be respecting, respecting to me. When you speak, I respect to you, okay?
It's not accurate, so I have to correct it. If I'm not saying that...
If you, I, no matter accurate or not accurate, you should be waiting until I finish my comments, okay? Try, be calm, calm down, okay? All right? So because the sister city, we have the Latin, it's 10 years they provide for us. When we established that this is sister city and a friendship city, we're also talking about it. So we, if anything travel, it's don't cost our city any money. Even last time the failure because of my understanding, it's, I have the option too, but finally just say use the city money. So I understand it, because I know that both cultural, okay? Sometimes you should be understanding the sister city, the culture, too. But this time, I feel they are the new Taipei city, it's kindnessly, actually, they help our city to have this kind of fellowship and communicate each other for the sister city. It's don't, don't have any financial impact. Actually, financial impact is help our city, too. They have the, this is two city, they have a traveler to come to our city, we have two hotels, and in future have three hotels. We have the TOT tax dollar money, too. And also, we have a lot of restaurant here. It's also help our city, the economic. And by the way, I saw that this trip also help us for the future 2028, the Olympic game, too. So that's why I think this trip, I really want to support it. Otherwise, it's not meaningful for any, like a sister city and a friend-able ship, the city. That's their resource. Actually, just say something. They are city, our city didn't cost our city the tax dollar any money. Reality, the cost their city the tax dollar, too. Their resident. That's meaning as their resident want to support it. Our city resident, one of our city resident, we should be respect our sister city, too. So that's why I, the mayor, the proposal, I second it. So for the future, I, based on my knowledge, I asking the, before the meeting, I asking the city manager for the, this, I asking the same question, want to have make some policy. For my understanding, it's because the FPPC, we should be do the case-by-case. So, yeah, if we can do the policy, why not? But the reality, I don't know, I just asking the city attorney to help. So it's, for this scenario, should be case-by-case, right, to approve it.
The current direction from the council was that every request for the trip would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, all right, so that's good for the, this time, yeah, because I think the whole thing on May, it's, I think, for my understanding, it's, it's a good opportunity and represent our city, too. And I think the mayor Wu have to spend his own dollars go to the Taiwan two times, right? And the whole family, too. So thank you, mayor, to, to, to help our city, to like, especially for the current economic, we needed more, like, we need our American resident to everything, so help our resident, but this is also opportunity to help our resident, too. Okay? Thank you, mayor. That's my comments.
Thank you, councilmember Ding. Did you have any more comments?
Yes, I do. I have a lot of more comments. So first of all, I do not want to rush this, and I have a city...
We're not rushing it. We have a first and a second, so we can start voting now.
Let me just say...
But can you summarize, because you're kind of going in circles here.
No, I have, I have a few questions. I'm not going in circles, and I have structured questions here. The question, another question that I have, because this is really important that we get this right. It's really important that we get this right, because if we don't...
Sorry, I don't want to interpret it.
Please ask your questions, so we can move forward and vote.
So the staff report incorrectly refers to government code 18950.1, which is unrelated to the government travel. Does staff know that? Or can they, can they review that right now? Because this is very important. We're passing something, and the right code is not even being cited here. It should be code 89, correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, 89503E1.
I can pull up the code, but I can assure you, councilmember, that we have checked both the government codes, checked the FPPC advice, and the process which is set out in the staff report is consistent with the law. There might be a typo in the government code section, but the process that we are putting before the council for approval is consistent with the law.
Well, of course, if we're trying to rush something, it's always going to be some kind of, some errors, and that's understandable. So I think, and I feel that this is a, this misstatement should be corrected before we move forward. And then I have another question.
Mayor?
Why does the staff reporting include a, why doesn't it include a structural analysis showing the trip and how it meets the legal requirements to qualify for government business? We need to clearly articulate the basis for our findings in the report, and the report lacks a breakdown. It's just a couple of pages, it lacks a complete breakdown of everything. And then when the individual goes to that foreign nation representing the city under our umbrella, can I ask the city attorney, what is the difference between the way that originally councilmember Wu went and now blanket it under, blanking it under our government approval to go to the foreign country? It's two different, I think there's two different responsibilities, liabilities there. When we blanket under government, our government of the city of San Gabriel versus if the individual councilmember goes on his own and pays for the trip on his own, can you, can you explain what the differences are and what the responsibilities and the liabilities are?
First of all, let me address your initial question. Government code section 18950.1, which is cited in the staff report, deals with exceptions with payments for travel made in conjunction with official agency business. So it is the correct code section.
And how about that, how about...
Allow him to answer your other question.
Do I understand your question correctly? You asked, you asked me what the difference is between an individual paying their own way and going to a city versus a trip that is sponsored by another governmental agency for two public officials? You want to know the difference between...
Yes.
I think it's self-apparent. One is a personal trip, one is a proposed governmental exchange or a governmental purpose trip.
So one, so one is basically blanketed. Are there any legal, are they, are there any differences? As far as when we go on a trip, saying that we're going and the city has approved that those individuals go and approve and represent us, they're protected. They have more protections, because going to a foreign country, representing, and I really, I want to stress this, it's not just anything, just something out of the nowhere. You go to a foreign country, it's very, it's very dangerous at some, at some point, right? Because you're introduced to particular people, you don't know. There's a lot of things that we need to be trained on before. I know if you're congressman, there's this law, FARA, right? Are you familiar with it? The FARA Foreign, the Foreign Agent Registration Act? Was that considered? Because when congressman people go representing the United States, they're trained, aren't So was the, was FARA considered?
It's not applicable to municipal government, as far as I know.
The optics of accepting travel from a foreign government deserve the legal scrutiny, and I'm so surprised that FARA was not considered.
Okay, thank you. You've repeated that before. Councilmember Ding, you had some more? There was something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I respect the councilmember Herrera, the comments, but also I hope you respect us. The mayor already make a motion, I second it, so just let the councilmember to make a decision.
It's just that it's not, it's not as easy as it sounds.
But we're ready to make the vote.
The two councilmembers that are going to...
We've had this discussion. Let's vote. If it fails, then we can continue on.
The two councilmembers that are going might or might not be in council in 2028 for the Olympics for that excuse.
You're repeating yourself at this point.
There should be a policy in place, because when you come back, there's no policy in state that says, hey, councilmember, you went to a foreign country, provide a report. Who did you meet? Where, like, some formal reports, I know. And then there should be amount of times that we get to travel, if you do travel.
Okay, you know what? We're going to take the vote. Let's take the vote.
Madam Mayor, I haven't gotten to speak yet. May I make some comments? I mean...
Since you haven't spoken.
Right.
Or Wu also, but, okay, go ahead.
So just wanted to share some thoughts, just, you know, as we are in discussion, deliberation. I mean, I do appreciate, because I feel it's appropriate to pull this for separate discussion, and especially I understand that, I mean, I understand that receiving a gift from a foreign government is legal, but I'm an accountant by profession, and in accounting, I think someone's already mentioned that we have the concept of appearance of impropriety, and it means that even if something is legal, sometimes it looks questionable, and it's best to have a discussion in the interest of transparency. So I appreciate that. And to my, and I guess it's been brought up a little bit here so far, that to my understanding, the city does not currently have a formal policy on the foreign travel rules. And not necessarily saying that I would be against this item in this particular circumstance, but I think that overall, as a, as a matter of going forward, if San Gabriel were to have a formal policy, it would be more cut and dry for the future, and we wouldn't have to take these items on a case-by-case basis and, you know, go through this rigmarole every time. But, yeah, so that's just kind of my feelings on it at the moment. So just, just wanted to see if my colleagues had any thoughts on that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Since we have a motion and we have second here, we shouldn't do it at this moment, but I think this is, this is good opportunity that we can just, you know, just bring this up, and, you know, maybe the people feeling, you know, trying to put that as like, oh, you're hiding something. I mean, while I do see the whole report, I don't, you know, it's clearer to state it, the date, what we... state that the date, what we, when we have the event and the reason we need to go and also actually that, you know, that the FPPC, there is the regulations and I actually personally also called the FPPC to make sure that we are not making any mistake because when we are representing the city, we want to do it right. So when I called the FPPC and also passed that to Mark and naturally Martin, they have the letter and also I provide all the email, just make sure that everything is not only the legal, but also appropriate. I don't see the reason that we have colleagues to think of so many reasons that, thinking that we are hiding anything. While I believe that the, the whole report has not been clearly read. So that's why even the date is so clear stated here, still trying to be blind. This is not right. But to me, this is a valuable opportunity that to strengthen and deepen the relationship and sister city that we established that last year with Banqiao and also this year with Hualian and everything that we have that in the past, the record, not only the video we had, but also in the, you know, we have all the previous agendas and meeting minutes and everything that can be go back and check it and before can make any wrong further state, wrong statement. So I would recommend my colleagues to do so before making any, any accuse. But I think the most important thing is, is that this is like a without financial burden to the city and I wanted to make that clear, I want to make that clear. The last time Councilmember Ding abstained, that one is we, as I, you know, we proposed to have our city manager as a city staff to keep the, maintain the relationship with the sister city because we, as an elected official, we will be gone someday. But the relationship should keep, remain in the city. So that's important for the staff to get connected with the key persons in that sister city. It will be really helpful because we have, in the past, we have the Mexico sister city, we have the Changhua as a sister city established in 86. Those are disconnected because the Councilmember at that time, they are already no longer serving the city and also the staff, they are, you know, just do not have those records. But I think that is already passed, but I think the real reason we are going because we got the invitation from the new Taipei city and Taipei city and also the new Taipei city, Banqiao district is our sister city and they have the venues for the World Master Games. That is a games that every two years, that is a world international games. And I think that will be really a great opportunity for our city to introduce a new mayor and also of the San Gabriel to our international partners. My question was saying, if there is anything that you believe is not legal, please report to FPPC. That is simple, so clear. I have all question asked. I have double-checked, everything's legal and also I will, I will be really appreciate if, don't try to jeopardize all the efforts that we have been doing because this is more like a, you know, we have a, this is a city with all the vision. We are connecting to the world. Don't limit yourself in your little box because to me, this, if you can consider that we are taking the flight, 14 hours there and then next day we start with all the visiting, meeting people, then all the schedule is bumper to bumper, then just right before they closed ceremony, we just need to come back right away and next day will be council meeting. It's a really enjoyable, some kind of trip if we're not doing that for the city. But of course, my colleagues also mentioned about the price. Well, how do we know that foreign city, how they contract with another airplane company? They have their way to handle it, but they have to provide all the numbers to us. Accommodations or even the food or even the airplanes or even the communicate, the commute, like the transportation, every single numbers will be disclosed on all Form 700. I really don't see there's any reason that why that as we are disclosing every single things as law requires and then we will be prohibited to do the business using our own time and our own, also expenses because we will be spending some monies anyway. That will be out of our own pocket. We're not using the city money as well. And that, I don't say that is a sacrifice. That is just a willingness to do some good wells to the city and we hope to bring a good result coming back. And this time, a mayor is going to send, provide the invitation to the mayor in the new Taipei city and also our sister city, Banqiao district. Coming to the United States and coming to our city in August, they will, we will urge them to stay in our hotels, of course, and eat in our cities and enjoy the whole atmosphere that we are welcoming them. That is, they're going to have 25,000 athletes, the players in World Master Games. That is also pretty similar to size as Olympics. But to us, we are looking for an opportunity to be a cooperating city with LA 28. That's the reason it's a great opportunity that we can approach them and we can meet all the international friends and invite them when we have an Olympics in Los Angeles. This is a founding place of Los Angeles. Please come and stay with us and we want to be a part of the revenue pies that we can receive from all the travelers. This is more like a, this is totally like voluntarily to sacrifice our time, but we are happy to do it, not only because I think this is the right thing to do, but also we want to make sure this is legal things we can do. So if there is, if there is any questions about the trip, I will urge my colleagues report to FPPC. I will be ready for that and I'm, I'm, you know, but make sure that you're making the right comments and using the right information. Don't try to twist the truth, then try to jeopardize the whole stories because when that is not reflecting truth, then I, I would say them some, you know, that will be not good for our city as, you know, as a teamwork. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to call for the vote.
Nobody is hiding or saying that you guys are hiding or we're hiding anything. I have to-
I call for the vote. Okay. Can you please give the results?
Saying that I'm hiding, being blind, that I'm trying to mislead.
We're done with the conversation, with the discussion.
And this, I had more que-, I, what's the purpose?
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
No, no, no.
4-1.
Thank you.
Public hearing A. Ordinance number 716, amending chapter 153 of the San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to hedge heights in the residential zones. ZTA 24-004, introduction and first reading.
Now open the public hearing. Acting Community Development Director Samantha Tuzart will make the staff presentation. The, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. The item before you this evening is Zone Tax Amendment, ZTA 24-004. And this is as it relates to hedge heights in the residential zones. To provide some quick dates to the City Council, the item was first voted on by the Council to place the item on the, on an agenda on July 2nd of 2024. September 17th is when the Council discussed the item and directed staff to return with an ordinance. November 18th, it's 2024, is when the Planning Commission considered the draft ordinance and recommended approval to the City Council with a 4-0 vote. Then in January of 2021 of this year, the City Council considered the draft ordinance, but continued the item and directed staff to gather additional information for discussion and consideration. Then on March 18th of this year, the City Council further discussed the matter and directed staff to return with an ordinance. And here we are, this evening, the City Council, before the City Council is the introduction and first reading of the Zone Tax Amendment. So in the past meetings, the Council reviewed and discussed definitions for hedges, also discussed existing height standards within the front, side and rear yards and also regulations for hedges within the public right of way. Additionally, the City Council reviewed maintenance standards as it relates to safety and as well as maintenance standards as it relates to property values. The City Council also reviewed what's considered the sample site plan and then also existing conditions for some hedges that are within the city. The proposed amendment this evening contained in the draft ordinance shows the proposed amendments. The underlines represent proposed texts and the strike through represents deleted texts. And here's a continuation of it, so minor amendments to the existing code section. So the recommendation before the City Council this evening is for the, is to conduct the public hearing, discuss the proposed ordinance number 716, waive the full reading, introduce ordinance number 716 by title only. And that's an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Gabriel, California, amending chapter 153, the zoning code of the City of San Gabriel Municipal Code relating to hedge heights in residential zones and to waive full reading of the ordinance and schedule the second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the next regular City Council meeting. And the ordinance would then become effective 30 days after the adoption. With that, this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Samantha. Does any Councilmember have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? Yeah, I see none. City Clerk, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
We do, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for letting us give a piece of our mind too. I appreciate that. I'm concerned that we've had no community outreach on this, other than people who come. I haven't seen any bulletins or, maybe it's been the newspapers. Just in our community, in our neighborhood, it's not talked about, nobody knows. And I would appreciate if our community knows a little bit more and has some input into what you're deciding because this is a huge, big difference. Any height hedge, that's huge. I'd like to see us go into a little more depth. What do surrounding cities, what do they do? I, I don't know. I've checked some and they all have a height limit. Have you consulted with the police, police department? Some years ago, when we put in not a hedge, but seven trees that were, you could see through, I did that at the recommendation of Finch Tree because he said that the police like to be able to see down a street. And I, we've seen that because we're on a dead end street and they don't want to go all the way down to the end if they don't have to, if they're looking for someone. And if they can't see down and particularly if you're allowed to have the tree right up to the sidewalk, there's, that's, that's a danger to the kids too. There is a difference between a hedge and a tree and I think that should be defined. Let's see. I think that was it. That's it. I, I would just like to see more community outreach, deliberate outreach because this is just, seems to be a very quiet thing and the few people who do know are feeling uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Okay. I now close the public hearing. It's now time for council deliberation discussion. Who would like to start? I, I know we've had quite a, quite a lot of discussion already, so I, you know, we, that's something we always are striving to get more community input, but we have had discussions, we've had comparatives with other cities. I, I think we're ready to move forward. This is, I think, the third discussion at least. Would someone like to make a motion?
I make a motion.
I have a first. Someone like to, second?
I'll second.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Okay. Next item, please.
We have no continued business this night. The next item is new business item A, Agreement with Grizzly Entertainment for an Enhanced Drone Show for the 2025 Independence Day Celebration in the amount of $71,000. Resolution number 25-17. Community Services Director Perez will make the presentation.
Good evening once again, Mayor Menchaca and members of the City Council. Oh, sorry. Tonight we have before you the Agreement with Grizzly Entertainment for the Enhanced Drone Show for the 2025 Independence Day Celebration. On July 3rd, 2024, the city held its first evening Independence Day event at Gaberlino High School from 5:00 to 9:30 PM. The event included food trucks, games, entertainment, community booths and a drone show. Though the event was free to attend due to anticipated attendance and limited area available within the Gaberlino High School softball and baseball fields, pre-registration was encouraged and it was estimated that we had approximately 3,000 to 5,000 attendees present. Most feedback about the event was positive. The city provided a safe, family-friendly environment for residents to celebrate the Independence Day holiday and residents were pleased with the fact that we had a drone show as opposed to fireworks. A comment that was received from council members and others in attendance was that the drone show, which was 10 to 12 minutes in length, was relatively short. To address this item, staff reached out to the same three companies that provided quotes for the 2024 event to see about options for a longer show. Two of the three companies provided quotations and I've included those in your report as well as here on the screen. Last year, we had determined that July 3rd was a good night to continue for the event in that other cities are typically doing a July 4th show and most people are off on the July 4th holiday and so they are able to be out late on a, on July 3rd. This year it happens to fall on a Thursday. So there are the quotes and based on the proposal, staff recommends working with Grizzly Entertainment. This was the company that we used last year. Last year's experience with Grizzly was very positive and staff believes that their approach to the longer show will create a great celebration and will be well received. As with the 2024 celebration, to help offset the cost of the drone show, staff will seek businesses who may wish to sponsor the event. Businesses will receive promotion of their services while helping to cover the cost of the event. Grizzly has provided photo images showing a visual of the lights, which you're seeing there on the screen, and a video with a sample rendering of the show. The quote includes up to 500 drones, 16 lights, two lasers and two smokes, choreographed music. So Marilyn, what am I doing here? Am I going to click on? Just, just click. Okay, there we go. Oh, going back to, sorry. Oh, going back to, sorry. So again, staff is proposing to once again use Gaberlino High School and is discussing the layout with San Gabriel Unified School District for the proposed added components. Oh, sorry. The total cost for the agreement with Grizzly Entertainment for the enhanced drone show is $71,000. For the 2024 event, the cost of the drone show was $45,000. Staff anticipates other event costs will be close to last year, and the majority of costs will be included in the fiscal year 2526 budget. The fiscal year 2425 budget for the Independence Day event is $50,250. Staff recommends that the city council appropriate funding from the city's general fund in the amount of $26,000 to cover the cost for the enhanced drone show. And any sponsorships brought in will help offset the additional cost for the drone show. Staff recommends that the city council approve a show with Grizzly Entertainment on Thursday, July 3rd, 2025, at a cost of $71,000 at Gaberlino High School, authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with Grizzly Entertainment, authorize the city manager to execute an MOU or other documents regarding the event with San Gabriel Unified School District, and adopt resolution number 2517 appropriating $26,000 from the city's general fund. One item that was removed from the recommendation, thank you to Mayor Manchaca for catching this, was to designate two council members to the Independence Day Council Committee, and that was already done as part of your consent agenda tonight. So that's been changed from the recommendation. So with that, and that's a drone image from last year's event, I'd be happy to answer any questions and comments.
Thank you, Rebecca. Does any council member have factual questions for staff to clarify the report? I see none. Chief City?
Actually, if I could, Mayor. So I know last time, we had Athens as a sponsor, right? I know it's on the report about sponsorships. How are we going to go about getting potential sponsors? And who did we have sponsored last time?
So you're correct that Athens was a sponsor. We actually, staff actually created a packet with varying levels of sponsorships. And so our proposal is to work with the council committee. We would be putting that out. A letter would go out with the mayor's signature, as well as with city manager Lazzaretto's signature to individual companies that may choose to sponsor.
I don't know if you know it from the top of your head, but who sponsored last time? I know Athens was the major, one of the major, they were, their logo on drones and everything.
Athens was a sponsor. We had a small sponsorship from Pasadena City College. And then Sheraton sponsored kind of an in-kind donation by providing hotel rooms for the drone company, because that's another part of their, the agreement with them includes a one-night stay in San Gabriel. I believe that was the extent.
And the last question, about how much came in through sponsorships? Do you remember?
It's probably about under $25,000, I would say.
Good amount. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wu.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first of all, I would like to, once again, thank you, extend my sincere thanks to Rebecca and also the city staff who helped a dream come true last year, that for the first time, instead of kids' days and a parade, we, our city, hosted its own Independence Day celebration by, you know, completing the San Gabriel Valley's very first drone show. So the turnout was really truly outstanding. I'm very happy to see now we have a proposal like this, Drone Show 2.0, featuring more drones. The question is, will we once again require the community to RSVP to attend this event? Because last year, I remember it was 6,000 tickets were claimed within just a few hours. But unfortunately, that many residents were still unable to enter the Gaberlino High School campus once the drone show began.
So our recommendation, and this was based on our debrief from last year, is to again take reservations because of the limited space. The recommendation from last year was to close the, advertise what the end time would be for people to be allowed to come into the space. And so I believe, last year's drone show was at 9:00, which actually, if you'll see in the image, it's not exactly dark-dark, so we may push that back a little bit later this year. But I believe that our recommendation was to have the gate closed, if you will, at 8:40, and we would advertise that, so that if people are not there or are not able to get in, in time, then they are, you know, not able to enter the gate. If you'll recall, we also had security at the gates, which we felt like was important to have, just because it is an enclosed area. And so that takes a little additional time for people checking in. They can't arrive necessarily at 8:35, expecting to be in by 8:40. So yes, to answer your two questions, we do plan to do the reservation system again. People were able to arrive on-site and were able to get in, but we do recommend the reservations. I believe the other change we had proposed after last year's event was, I think last year, people were able to reserve up to like 40 tickets, and our recommendation was to lower that amount this year, so that people are truly just getting spaces for those that they plan to bring.
I see. So can we begin planning for parking logistics earlier this year? Because last year, we were really fortunate to have a support from the San Gabriel Supermarket and Mission Valley Free Methodist Church that grow, you know, they generously provide the parking space. So I think within the early coordination, that we can minimize the traffic impact to our community.
Definitely. We've already started some work. We have not yet reached out to those parking contacts, but we definitely plan to begin as soon as we can with these efforts, yes.
Thank you, Rebecca. Yeah, that concluded my question.
Any other clarifying questions? Okay.
Can I make a comment?
Why don't you wait after public comment? I did have something to say. Oh, I know. Last year, we had quite a few people outside of the gates, because you can actually see from your home. If you live near Gaberlino, you can see that. But there were so many people outside the gate, kind of just holding on to the gate and looking, and I'm just, it just felt very strange. I don't know if we can make any accommodations or get a bigger space. I mean, that space, plus maybe some more. Was there any conversation last year about expanding that area?
I'm not quite sure how we would expand that area. We are having conversations, actually, we're having a meeting about other items as well, but with San Gabriel Unified, so we can talk to them about that space. I know at the school, they are pretty much only proposing to give us that area to use for the lights and lasers. And this is still a question that San Gabriel Unified has to address, but they're, the Grizzly Entertainment is proposing for the lights and lasers to actually be on the buildings that you're seeing right on that image there. So those would be kind of at the forefront, and then the drone images would be behind. But I don't know, staff has not yet evaluated whether or not there would be additional space for that. To have people outside.
And the other question is, in your conversations with San Gabriel Unified School District, I know pet owners were wondering if there would be an area kind of, that they can put, take their pets to, because it is silent, but more of a pet area. So you wouldn't need the big space, but maybe a space in some other, you know, on the other side? Because really, I mean, once you do that drone show, it could be, even from the superstore, probably, you can see it clearly. But I guess we can have more of those conversations, but I know you're the lead with San Gabriel Unified School District, and I know it gets complicated with the pets, but that was something that was brought up last year, so. So thank you. So, Chief City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No public comment here.
I'm in check, I have a question.
So it's now time for council discussion?
No, it was actually a question. So building on what councilmember Wu mentioned, are we considering any public transport? Maybe having people park at the playhouse and then having a shuttle service? Is that being discussed at all, or no?
We have not had that discussion. That being said, we can have that discussion. We don't have shuttle vans, per se. We have the Ride SG vehicles, which are, I believe, can transport a total of five people, so it's not a huge amount of people. But we can discuss that as an item.
Do we not? Does the city not?
Sorry, Vice Mayor Chan made no difference than me.
Yes, I use it all the time. So I know exactly what those shuttles look like. Yeah, five passengers.
Does the city not have shuttles or anything like that from before? Because we contracted that, right, Mark?
Another idea, just to kind of piggyback, is Vincent Lugo Park is much closer. Or McKinley School is much closer, something to think about, because Mission Playhouse is kind of distant. But the problem is, we don't have the shuttle buses. But something, again, to discuss, you know, kind of throw that out as ideas.
Just to build on that, that's a great idea. Perhaps in the future, I don't know if this time, we can have multiple stops. If we do budget in a shuttle, which would be nice, then we can have multiple stops, something in mid-city, something down in the south, work with the church, so people can park there. I think will be something that we can make everything more accessible, to your point, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any more council discussion? If there's none, I need a motion.
A motion to approve.
I second.
I second. Please vote.
Motion passes by a vote of 5-0.
Next item, please.
City managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a quick congratulations to former Mayor Wu on a great year. Thank you for the leadership, and it was a pleasure working with you. And congrats on the state of the city. And Mayor Manchaca, I look forward to a wonderful year in-person with you. Last time we did it together, we were on opposite sides of a screen, so looking forward to an in-person year.
Thank you. Okay, council comments and conference meeting reports. Who would like to start?
I will.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Just make a short one. On April 10th, I had the honor to attend the Proposition 36 Implementation Forum invited by Mayor Michael Cal, that through the League of California City. The forum features the distinguished speakers, including LA County Sheriff Robert Luna, LA District Attorney Nathan Hockman, Sacramento DA Tinhoe, and Michelle Hennessy, Special Assistant for Legislative Affairs at the DA's office. The purpose of Proposition 36 is to reform the laws, and that has significantly contributed to the rise of the homelessness, drug addictions, and theft across California, while equipping judges with the tools and flexibility they need to effectively address these challenges. And I want to thank our city council for its supporting and endorsing Proposition 36. During the forum, it became clear that there is a current no-funding located for enforcing this voter-approved measure. So as a result, a member of rally will be held on April 23rd in city leader summits hosted in Sacramento's to urge the governor and also legislatures to support Cal City's three key budget priorities, including the full implementation of Proposition 36. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Who would like to?
I'll go next, Mayor.
Okay.
So I was also at that conference, and it was quite interesting to build on what councilmember Wu said. It was also, the issue of fentanyl was talked about, and how dangerous it is, and how it's affecting the community. So I thought that's, that was something remarkable, just to learn and see how much fentanyl can, is captured, and how much fentanyl can actually kill individuals. Very little bit of fentanyl, couple grains that can kill individuals, and they have overdoses and they die. So I thought that was pretty impressive. Also, at this moment, I would like to see if we can, if I could make a motion to start discussing, or direct staff to start discussing a policy for the sister cities with regards to travel and all the stuff that we talked about, so that we don't have any kind of misunderstandings, and it can be more transparent. So I would like to make that motion.
Right, it's not actually a motion, you just need to, direction, yeah. So we need three council members?
I would like to support that.
Anyone else?
Just to get policy.
Just a policy.
Just a policy discussion, right?
No, you need three.
Yeah.
Okay, great, and I do two, so it's four, I'm assuming five. Okay, so at some point, we need to put that on the agenda. Anything else? Councilmember?
Thank you.
Okay, who would like to continue? Vice Mayor Chan?
Okay, thank you. Let's see, starting April 5th, I attended a pickleball tournament at Smith Park. Some of you will remember the great San Gabriel pickleball controversy of 2023. If you don't, you can ask me later. I'll give you the full rundown. On the 9th, I attended a business networking meeting at our own Luna's Mexican restaurant, right next door. On the 10th, I attended, oh, yeah, the 10th, I attended San Gabriel Commissioner's Dinner to honor and thank all of our San Gabriel's dedicated commissioners, who serve our city so well. So thank you. On the 14th, which was yesterday, I attended my monthly Chinese-American Citizens Alliance monthly dinner, there's a dinner meeting in Rosemead. And one last thing, I want to request a similar, well, a similar kind of request. I want to request some support regarding a presentation item I would like on the next council meeting agenda. Recently, I talked with a high school friend, and she told me that about a year and a half ago, she suffered a stroke. And she's now recovering, but since May is Stroke Awareness Month, I'd like to request an agenda item for next meeting to recognize this, and you know, and have my friend would like to come and accept the proclamation, and say a few words about her journey. So would any of my colleagues like to support me in this?
I'll support.
Of course. So it would be like the other proclamations that we do? Yeah, it would just be?
Any kind of month, this would be Stroke Awareness Month, that happens to be in May, and then staff can draw up the fancy proclamation, and then she, my friend, will probably be able to come to accept it, and if you can give her a few minutes to talk about her stroke journey and her recovery so far.
Okay, no, I think, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
No objections. Okay. Councilmember Ding?
Thank you, Mayor. On the April 6th, I joined the choir, also tried the choir council in the Church of Temple City. And they're specially fundraising for the Eden Fire, to, for help there, then some, actually, some singer, they have the house burn, but she's still do the performance to let, share the experience. So we are in the community, so it's really want us to help each other for our community. And on the, the April 10th, I attended, it's called KIPA, it's a Chinese insurance professional association. And I want to share something, it's a seminar, it's regarding the, regarding the, it's employee well-being, the processing. So it's, they have the good lecture from the Kaiser Permanente. So I suggest, Mark, so maybe can have to call them or contact them, because they are our insurance provider, too, to help our city staff. So hopefully, that this is kind of training, they will lean to stay our city, to help our city, it's a good safety and a good city, too. Yeah, definitely for the evening. Yeah, definitely for the evening, it's for the Commissioner Dinner, it's thanks all the commissioner to serve our community. And on the April 12th, I have a chance to attend the China Service Center, the World Health, the Celebration Wellness Fair. They are, they are new facility in the Ahama, the main street. It's, it's, it's facility is pretty good, and I think, I suggest our city residents, it's use this opportunity to use their facility to help, especially to help like low-income and elder people have the good environment. It's really good event. And last one, oh, actually, the Z9, I have the, I joined the Chinese Dancing Association. They're holding the performance in our Mission Playhouse. It's a good performance, I think our mayor and a former mayor there too. And the, their performance is really good. It's like not just the Chinese-American, they have the Japanese, Korea, Mongolia, it's all the Asia, the culture too. Yeah, so it sets meaning, our Mission Playhouse is a really good place to this kind of performance. Last one, I want to do the announcement too, because on the May 3rd, we call the Thanks USA Healthcare Fair and the AAPI Heritage Month, and Saturday morning, it's start from 9:00 to until 2:30. So this, like, all the community have chance to coming, but you needed the ticket, but admission is free, but you need ticket, because we want a safety for our Mission Playhouse, to control the, the inside of Mission Playhouse. But outside, they have the healthcare, I, K9 should be to, there to, like, also give to the people, K9 also help, like, some mental health to help the people too, yeah. So I, I just this kind of announcement, so hopefully, our resident, not just our resident in the San Gabriel Valley, the community member, don't waste this kind of resource. Yeah, we have the, like, almost 30-something, the free medical consultant from MD, or have the, like, Chinese, like, acupuncture or medicine, the consultant, so, and some, a lot of very unique, it's help you the health wellness to our community. So remember, May 3rd, okay, morning, 9:00 to 2:30, in the, our city, the Mission Playhouse, inside our site, our patio room have the, like, wellness seminar too, yeah. And actually include all our staff, don't lose, try use this opportunity. Yeah, thanks the city, the community also want me to show appreciation to the city to support this kind of wonderful event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. Okay, well, I also went to the great pickleball tournament. I won't say more than that, but so many people, a lot of my neighbors are there too, so that was really good. Commissioners Dinner, done every two years, to thank our commissioners for their volunteer roles. It was very nicely done. Thank you to city staff for making it just such a warm space that evening. I did attend the community art event, which was the first ever community art event. I know we, at least one class that we have here, and a lot of the artists were there, but I was surprised too, just ordinary residents who have never had a public stage for their artwork. I met one neighbor that just keeps her artwork in, in one of the bedrooms, and it is so much, there's so much talent there. So it just really, you know, kudos to the Community Services Department for bringing these people out, and just, they just felt so comfortable sharing their art. It's just great talent that's been hidden for so many, for so many years. And when I spoke to them, it's just something they like to do, and there just hasn't been an opportunity for them to share their art. So the good news is, it will be coming back. So that was kind of exciting. And I will be putting in another plug for the Kiwanis Pancake Breakfast. I am, well, former president, currently vice president of the Kiwanis Club. This is a generational favorite. I think we're down to three generations now, where grandparents are saying, you know, they used to do this also, because we're on our 86th year. And it's exciting, you know, tickets are $8, four for 30, you get your pancakes and your juice and sausage. We will have some community booths, including Sufit Simmons with, she will be there, raising money for Bentley, who is dealing with, or, well, battling cancer right now, so go into our booth there. And we have other groups there that will be hoping to share some of their causes. We have LA vs. Hate also, that's going to be there, so hope to see everyone. And as always, it's the day before Easter. So this year, it's April 19th, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and hope to see all of my colleagues there. And so with that, this concludes the open session portion of the meeting. The city council will now recess to closed session, and the closed session report will be given at the next regular meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, May 6th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. Council will reconvene in closed session at 8:58.